Okay, I will call the Halifax Board of Selectmen Meeting of March 8th, 2020, at 4:00 PM to order. The meeting is being taped by Area 58, and we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance.
Stuff. All these wire hazards Caesar has them.
Okay, is there anything to be added to the agenda or subtracted? That's good. Okay, motion to approve the agenda? All those in favor, aye? All right. First up is selectmen meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the selectmen meeting minutes from August 24th, October 18th, January 11th, and February 11th.
So second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, okay.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 77 for $389,178.11. Vendor warrant number 78 for $274,473.45. The withholding warrant number 79 for $130,158.05.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstand.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrant commitment. Ambulance commitment 214 to 220 for $24,628.46. And the ambulance commitment from 221 to 227 for $8,687.30.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye. Do you want me to do the vendor warrant separate?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the following vendor warrant number 80 for $1,439,893.53.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Upstand.
And then I move to approve the school warrant number 81 for $328,104.25. And the mobile home park fee number 3 for $5,160.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye. I move to approve the following selectmen bills. Let's see. What is this? Mobile home park licensing fee. Was that in the other thing?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so scratch that. For $74.26 for Ralex. KP Law, $384.30. Reimbursement to Ed Thorne for $47.97.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, stand.
Selectmen bills.
Okay, up next we have...
What do you got for us, Ed?
This is Chairman, a couple of things. Obviously, you've got the community survey report in your packet regarding two surveys that were done. One was for the 30 communities on the South Shore, and the other is for the statewide survey for communities that were at a population of 5,000 to 10,000. Is that in the general mail-in discussion? Anybody have any questions regarding the survey?
All right, hold on.
This is from the MMA Director.
Wait, so explain this, Ed.
Pardon?
Explain this.
Explain it?
Yeah, with what?
Okay, well, in South Shore communities, 30 were surveyed. Policy board, there were 23 that were boards of selectmen, and seven were now called Select Board. Number of members, 22 communities had five, eight had three. Of the 30, 22 had a town administrator, eight had a town manager. And legislative body, open town meeting was prevalent, and 28 in the representative town meeting, and two.
Gotcha.
And then the statewide was 86 communities. Policy board, Board of Selectmen were in 74, Select Board was in 12. Number of members, 50 communities had five, 36 had three. The chief official was town administrator, and 63, town manager, and 14. And in nine other communities, either they didn't have an administrator or a manager, or they were called a chief administrative official, the CEO. And then legislative body, 83 had an open town meeting, and three had a representative. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. The other one was the Stump Brook Dam report, but I think our chairman actually visited the site yesterday with the health agent, so...
Did you find any beavers?
We found muskrat, and they were trapping for beaver. So the Board of Health needs to issue an emergency order for the trapping of the beavers, and Conservation Commission may have to as well for the removal of the beaver dams that they've built up for the lodges.
And the reason we're having a problem there is that the level of the pond is up, but the city of Brockton can't do anything about it because the beaver dam is in the way. So, you know...
Can I object for a second? So is that something that they contacted you and said it's you? They have to go forward, or the board goes forward? So because it's under the state wildlife management, they're taking care of it right now. Okay. But they're saying that if it's outside of their jurisdiction, the town is going to have to pick up the cost of trapping the beaver.
And then what about the dam removal?
That's what they mean right now. So the way it was explained to me yesterday was that they would go out there, they would pull wood off of the dam, and let the water increase the flow, and see what happens over the next few days to see if other beavers come back and rebuild the dam. So they believe that there's at least four lodges in Barridge right now, in different parts. They have not... Their plan is, once they remove the dam that comes down before you get to the Brockton Dam, they're going to get the canoes and go to the other side, and go downstream, and see if there's any other beaver dams built up. Now, yesterday, being there, the water comes down the fish ladder, right? And it looks like it's just pulling, and it looked like the water's flowing back towards the dam because the water is really not flowing out. So my guess is that there are other... Oh, you're saying on the... On the outflow side, yes. Wow, okay. So it's not really moving like it used to. So the fish ladder is not really... You're not seeing rushing water going? There's rushing water over the fish ladder, but once it gets to the other side, it looks like the water's swirling instead of flowing. Okay, interesting. So we had a good hour and a half conversation with Mass Wildlife about beavers and their dams and how that...
Did you learn what?
Yes, learned a lot. So we also learned that there's a lot of muskrats over there.
The muskrats?
They're the ones that dig out the dike roads. So if they don't trap those as well, then the dike roads are going to be wiped out. So we're probably going to have to increase the funding for trapping at the Board of Health to come up with a fund. They said that they would take care of the trapping that's occurring in Barridge, but if there's something outside of Barridge, it's going to be on the Board of Health to follow through with. Now, if it's affecting private property owners, like Mr. Barley said that there was one off of Laurel Street that he issued a permit for last year where the private owner of the bog brought in the trapper. So it seems like we're going to have to add some additional funding to the Board of Health to deal with this, and we will need to also actively search out people that want to trap. Because the way they explain the cost, it could be $2,500 to come in and set up the traps, and then the traps are no kill trap, so someone has to go monitor the trap every 24 hours, and usually it's a $100 fee to go check every trap. Not sure I understand what that... So the dam can't be dismantled, so the trapping's happening? The way that they're trying to do is try to trap the beaver while the dam's in place because if they take the dam out, then they won't trap the beaver that's there.
Or somewhere else.
Yes. So the idea is to remove the beaver from the area, and this seems like it's a growing problem all over Massachusetts because they changed the laws 20 or 30 years ago, not as many people trap now. It's more of an art form, I guess, at this point in time.
So they're going to take the timbers off and then trap the beaver kind of simultaneously?
Yeah, right now, they've got the trap set. Oh, good. They were out there yesterday. So they're going to keep checking the traps. They took out one 55-pound beaver already.
55 pounds?
Yes.
That's a big beaver.
It's a really big beaver.
So...
It's like my dog.
They know that there's at least four different lodges in the Barridge system, so once they take care of this dam, they're gonna have to remove the others as well. So I drove around with Bob yesterday, and we looked, drove down to Headwaters, seen the water flowing out of Barridge around Oklahoma Street, down to Front Street. You can see down to Front Street, the water's really high there, and it's not going through the dam as fast as it probably should be. So it seems like there's multiple issues there. Okay. So we have a 4:15 appointment with Mr. Barrows.
Hi, folks. My name is Don Barrows, and I'm the president of Mont Ponce, Winston Street. So I just got these are the notes. I actually, in October, when Charlie was here, and we actually gave him this almost like similar, I don't know how he loved the notes. I know you say he loves the notes. This is just, I'd like to go over today real quick. I know we don't have the time, but at least you have these. And I could just, I just can quickly add, and it's kind of like the same old thing, but I think the difference is this time, I'd like to be involved. My job changed, so now I have more time, and I was going to request if you need a liaison, that I could do it, just be a liaison with any of these points I want to go over. Want me to go over?
Yes.
So the most important thing that we see this season is the weed eradication. I know, I haven't got back to you on Solitude, I think we had a conversation with Dominic. I don't know, we can talk later, just, I just don't know where that went with that, but if that's the most important thing, I think we all agree, right?
Oh, yeah.
And we just had, we've got to do something this year. We can't wait.
Well, we had the funding for it last year.
Yeah, so that's what I was, that's also, and I maybe not put it in the right order, but there is funding for the ponds, and I don't know what that amount is, and I'm just curious to see if that could be used this year.
The answer is yes.
That's a pretty answer. We'll cover the costs, that's another question.
The answer is yes.
For the weeds and the alum, or just the weed?
Pardon?
For the weeds and the alum treatment?
I just prepared a demo for the board that shows what... You know, what funds are available, and after my conversation with Solitude about what to propose and potential expenses are going to be, so as you have in your handout.
Yes. It's like a puzzle.
There's a...
I think it was on the top when I came in.
A former article, special town meeting from 2017, then there's the balance of a 319 grant, and then the state received, I mean, excuse me, the town received in December $124,000 in earmark funds from the legislature for a total of $459,000 and change. And that should be enough to get rid of the farnwort and milfoil, and the alum treatment is wrong.
Both ponds, alum, east and west?
Pardon?
East and west?
Yep. So that's all going to happen in May.
I don't know how you feel about having a liaison with Solitude, and I'm not a town employee, but it would help us just to learn more, I guess, both ponds, if we could be a direct line, or we could just be listening to what Solitude's telling us.
No, I think it's a great idea, and I think that I've already approached the health agent who's going to be involved because of Sinovac here. So he is going to be part of the team, and as Pamela knows that, you know, my MO is to have more people involved in particular projects, and this being one of them, so we'd be thrilled to have him.
Just tell me what you have to do.
Sure.
Just tell me, you know, swearing, whatever you need to do.
So in the meantime, I've been working with Solitude about putting together the plan. They have the state bid, so we don't have to issue an RFP or anything like that. County Council has already ruled in that regard, so...
Time saver, right there.
Absolutely. So they're working on the permitting right now for National Heritage and DEP, and of course, we'll have to go to Conservation for order conditions, but that's all...
National Heritage might be already in place.
Well, from what I understand, I think they may have to go through it again, but they've started a process, so...
Okay, great.
But like I said, the target date is May for the treatment.
Do we know if, once they do the weed eradication, are they going to also do something to make that weeds out of the water? There's going to be a lot of them. Is that part of the, that's included in the plan? Is it part of the plan?
That'll be my job, I'll find out.
Well, if they don't, they root themselves.
Great, that's what they did the last time, they did the weeds.
They took them out?
Yeah, they took them out, and they chopped up a lot of them, and they re-rooted itself.
Well, it's always going to happen, it's always going to happen. The reason why we have the weeds, the good news is that the water's been great for the last three years, and that's the sunlight just makes everything grow. So it's, you know, it's a two-way store, I guess. All right, I know we get short of time. So, okay, number three, that was, oh, testing. I don't know if DEP is going to be doing it this year, and I haven't heard anything yet, and there's another thing that I could be also interested in contacting them. I have all their contact information. I'm the one who actually called them to get the diversion going because everyone was talking about the flooding, which is fine with me, you know, and we can talk about that, I guess, you know, anything that I can do. And that's the, comes down to, so the testing, I'll get ahold of you. Extreme rain events, so that's enough, that's why I just, okay, so I'll call him, and I'll make sure that that's always happening, if that's okay with the board, and you, like, contact him directly.
Yeah, and they were really good about opening the gates a couple weeks ago.
And they didn't, I don't think they opened the sluice gate, but they, you know, I'll have to find that out, but I think they said they have trouble with the sluice gate, which they say something different in the city of Brockton. You already went over the Stump Brook, so you saw how it kind of worked. So I guess I'd still like to go with the city of Brockton to see how the sluice gate works, and if they can show us what's the deal with that, and so that we're all in it together, with transparency, the whole thing, because we really don't know how that thing works. I know you have, they put this wheel, and they say it's stuck, and they don't know if it's going to work, but at least go out there, get them, they're getting them to do something, or at least know that we're doing something with them, that when we ask them something, at least they'll, they'll have to answer us with something, somewhere down the line, right?
And we can try to set up a date that works.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't, even if you folks want me to go there with them, and I can relay all the information to you, you know, if you have time, you know, it's not on your side. And I guess that is pretty much it. Like I said, the liaison, I have to be happy to do it. I want to, I have time now in my life where I can actually get my feet and hands into it.
Just your feet wet?
Yeah, yeah, and muddy.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Pam, in our list of liaisons, who's our liaison to the central? Pam's just going to look in the book and see what we have for...
Oh, great.
Who's liaison? Spots, I guess. Representative from the board, yeah. Do we have the Central Plymouth County Water District?
Central Plymouth County Water District Representative, we have Peter Veneto, and then the alternative member that is vacant. Then it has to do with the town watershed, we have a gentleman that we're actually appointing.
Yeah, I think so. So if we...
Peter Veneto is...
Appointed him the alternate.
Mr. Barrows?
Yeah. We could appoint him the alternate.
I completely forgot about that mention, yeah. I get them involved in the, for them to also get the openings, because they're kind of the authority, but they don't recognize them really.
So is there a motion to appoint Mr. Barrows as the alternate to, alternate representative to the Central Plymouth Water?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
I think you do get to get sworn in now and...
Yeah, give them a card.
Get a card.
Have to get that.
I work if I can.
Okay, our next appointment is at 4:30.
Thank you.
Mr. Hay. That's you.
So we just asked you to comment, to discuss, obviously, over the last few weeks, you know, that we've had a lot of issues with the roads and sinkholes and... Yeah, a lot of problems with the roads. So we figured we would reach out to you, see if there's anything the board can do to help, and see if there's anything you have an update on, even?
Well, I asked you to play a two-minute drill video that Channel 5 did on why the pothole was so bad this year.
Oh, okay.
So it actually explains what's going on. It makes sense to me also. I've always said, everybody knows what's happening, but this actually shows what... While waiting for that, I just got a price on getting another mile of 106 ton, and it's up to 380 something about, so no level in the way.
How much is it?
387, 82,000.
That's just one pothole?
No, that's just... A big pothole. Yeah. No, that's one mile, sorry.
Yeah, that's a big pothole.
So we went to the cowwash. Am I playing it now?
Yeah.
Cowwash, what are you doing properly?
You know, you're just like, are you kidding me? Everywhere I'm going, I'm popping tires, I'm popping the wheels, and I have a $1,200-plus bill because of a pothole.
Potholes are a part of reality here in New England, but with our changing climate, we could be seeing more of these craters, and that could drill a hole in your water.
The winters that we've had the last couple of years where they've been comparatively mild, every night it drops down to freezing, and every day it rises up above it, that's the worst-case scenario for potholes.
And Jonathan Gulliver of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation is right. The number of days in Boston where temperatures have been below freezing has dropped since the 1800s, on average, by 11 days. It's all about the freeze-thaw cycle. Normal wear and tear from traffic over time leads to cracks. Rain or melting snow seeps into those cracks and cools under the pavement. When that water freezes, it expands. When the ice melts, a gap forms below the surface. The road continues to weaken, and a pothole is formed.
It's going all the way through the season, but that's pretty unusual. And when you think about it from the taxpayer perspective, anytime you've got crews going out there and doing that work, it costs us money.
Max DOT estimates the typical cost to repair one lane of interstate is $300,000 per mile. A three-lane highway is approximately $900,000 per mile, and with a big enough pothole, you could be spending even more on costing repairs like Pete Green.
I lost both tires on the left, I lost both wheels on the left, and now I'm stuck because I'm trying to get a car in, but my radar ain't...
Unfortunately, the shop says Pete is not alone.
We're seeing right now a minimum of 35 tires a week, up to 40, and I would say a half a dozen wheels.
It's not just water on the surface that can cause pothole problems.
As the sea level rises, the water that's in the ground, that's beneath the roads, that are close to a coastal area, that water is also rising.
But with all the perspective, over the next 80 years, the number of nights here in Boston that hit the freezing point are below, it's expected to drop to a level that we see in a town like Marietta, Georgia. That means fewer freeze-thaw cycles, but as the sea level continues to rise, we're still going to have a pothole problem for a long time to come. For throwing team five, I'm your oldest colleague, Andrew Lee.
Remember I said?
Yeah, yep.
It's a smart day, I'm sure you've seen it a lot.
That was a really nice way. You did a really good job. I like that. I like that.
But that's basically what's going on, so it's happening everywhere. Even dry and fill the holes, it's just a pen, but it's wet, and when they're wet, they're not staying.
Thanks for the presentation.
That was good.
I couldn't believe I got it today, somebody sent it to me.
It was a harsh second.
Yeah, it's from last.
It's pretty good.
Right.
But other than that.
There's really nothing we can do.
Yeah, and the sink, the two sinkholes that we had, the one on Water Street, that is, they built that new house, we just need to find out if they did some work there. And I don't know what they did, but it seems where the gas company came in, that's where we're having a problem. So we're going to have to find out what they did there.
Right.
And that's an unacceptable road, so I can't do any drainage on that, I'm not supposed to, at least.
What about the other one?
The other one, we'll wait until it dries out a little bit, we got the metal plate over it, and we don't want to dig down into the water.
Right. Okay, well, thank you for the update, we appreciate that.
And then those prices, don't forget, that's a expressway, not one of these roads.
Right.
Yeah, we're talking almost 300 grand, that's your amount here.
Well, that's, yeah.
Well, the real problem's the base that we have in town. We don't have, we don't have a base.
As that lady was saying, the water tables are moving, going up, and Halifax has got a lot of water anyway, so that's half, another problem with most of the roads. If you go to somebody who's really falling apart, you can step on the cracks and you'll see the water. Now it's starting to dry out, but.
Right.
So water plays two roles, as the enemy and as the aspirate for life.
Other than that, that's all I can, we'll try to keep up on.
Make sure direct anybody with any serious problems to highway.
Yeah, yeah, don't call me, call me. We're the ones that gotta go fix it, so.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
See you later.
Okay. So next on the list is, we got Norfolk Aggies. Increase, so the total for out-of-county tuition rate will be $24,572, and we have two students currently enrolled. All right. The inter-municipal dispatch agreement.
Revised ACO by law?
Oh, I skipped that one, huh?
Mm-hmm.
You have a copy in your files, correct?
Revised, yeah.
Chief, you want to explain?
No, oh, simply, it's a $50,000 increase this year, I think we've been with them for five years, and we've had the same price for that time. They are hoping that it will actually come down a little bit, they continue to look at bringing in other towns and other ways, but, you know, overall, whenever we talk about the dispatch, the service, we've had a great service there. It's been a considerable savings from when we were doing dispatch in-house. I think the service is much better, and then I always point out, there's a lot of things that people don't see, that the Rock does for us all the time, so they, you know, they paid for the price of replacing our repeater system, was over $50,000. They updated the cruisers and fire apparatus with mobile computers. They're installing, right as we speak, they're doing the firehouse software that we use for incident reporting and our inspections and all that, that was over $60,000. There's a lot of things that the Rock does, because they're able to get grants for that stuff that they do for us in addition, but this year, the, it's, is that a two-year or one-year agreement? Two-year, yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, you got a copy right there.
So is there a motion to approve contract?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, just a copy for us, all the time. Pam is the dog, ACO update.
It's in the green folder.
It's in the green folder?
Yeah. He just had to change a little bit, because some of the stuff that he, the stuff that he presented, I guess, was, it was incorrect, so it's, I think it's highlighted in yellow in the screen, and I don't think it was like the whole bottom, I think it was just in the one, but.
Do you guys want to talk to the chief? Make a call, you guys want? He wasn't, so, but he said you guys need to make a call.
No, I think we're okay.
Yeah, because I think the fees that he presented, or they were, fees or something.
So the biggest change for licensing is no license fee shall be charged for a dog owned by a person 70 years or older. That's Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, subsection 139. Late fees and citations may still be charged, though. So you still have to come in with the rabies information and prove that the dog had the rabies shot, so the dog can be licensed. And then at, on, instead of September 1st, a late fee of $10, it'll be September 14th. A fine of $50 per dog will be incurred. On November 1st, a court citation of $50 will be issued in addition to all the outstanding fees for each unlicensed dog. So that kind of clears up, right now, the language that was proposed had a fine on September 1st, then another fine on the 15th, and there was questions over that, so I think this cleans up that language.
We still have the clinic.
I don't think we did this past year.
I think they looked into that.
The Board of Health was working.
Just announced, just posted it.
Rabies?
Oh, clinic, just regular, that's why.
No, no, talking about rabies. For dogs. And cats. Okay, is there a motion to support the bylaw changes for the town meeting warrant? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
You're on it? I was going to ask if you wanted to be reappointed. You're on it, I already, I was going to ask you if you wanted to be reappointed.
So I would move to reappoint William Hinckley to the Taunton River Stewardship Council.
So.
My second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Is there a motion to reappoint Kathy Shabon?
Did she get back to you?
Registers.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Is there a motion to approve?
Aye, motion.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Then we have the earth removal closeout.
What, did you skip something? Yeah, you did.
What did I skip now?
You're trying to rush this.
I got basketball at 5:45, trying to get this. What did I skip?
Municipal Employee Board of Selectmen need to sign disclosure.
Special position.
Where is that one?
Right behind Kathy Shabon.
No, I mean.
It's in the, the sign on one, it's in the.
Blue or green?
Green. The original's on the green folder, and what I give is that my copy, so it's in the second one. So, yeah, it starts with a big wheel.
Is there a form? Says we have to sign a form.
In the back? Oh.
Oh, it's right here, here we go.
Okay, you got it, Gordon, we don't have it.
Yep, here we go. So, is there a motion to approve this disclosure?
No, so moved.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
It only have to sign one?
Yes, it only one signature, no?
Perfect. Yep. Now you can go to earth removal.
All right, I keep skipping lines, I don't know what it is tonight. Okay, Morse Brothers, Inc., Earth Removal Closeout, 250 Langley Street. So it says that the permitted removal was exceeded by 16,000 cubic yards.
Impression's broken.
So it says that Condition 14 states the earth removal is subject to a 25 cent per cubic yard fee. It says, although we have been advised the additional 16,000 cubic yards were used for the cranberry bog improvement maintenance, we will leave the issue of the additional fee to the discretion of the selectmen. In the event is determined the additional extraction fees to be paid, please advise and then we'll make payment to the town.
Move that they pay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of requiring them to pay?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, and then, is there a closeout signature?
No, what I'll do is, you guys.
So do you want us to, motion, motion to close on continuance on payment of the fee?
You can do that, and then I think the other thing was, at one point, I think that with the last gentleman, we didn't, Mr. Lawn, because I think he gave a bond.
Okay.
So I think one of the guns, the bond.
Yep.
And close out the, the earth removal.
I move to close out.
On contingent on payment of the additional.
I motion to close out the earth removal permit on condition of the additional fees payment.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
You need the bond at the next fee.
Okay.
Okay, then come on, go to the paper.
Yep, that's mine. Stormwater management, if you lost track of where we are.
Thank you. So the letter from FEMA. No, I did it again.
You did it again, I just told you where we were, and you skipped it.
All right, it's in the run. I'm switching between folders, give me a break.
Ed, you have the verbiage for the change of stormwater, I think at one time someone gave it to you and it was highlighted, I don't have the exact changes, but.
Okay, so we don't have.
But it's in the folder about the verbiage.
No, I'm sorry, just. A green folder, the green folder, the only one you have, Gordon.
I have two folders, I have a green and a blue folder.
You should give me the green folder.
Yeah, just one.
And I'll pass him what he needs. I guess we should do that, yeah. We'll just pass it down.
Yeah, it's not, not there.
Is there a dead light on this?
Well, that, no, we're just going to, we're going to put the verbiage inside the, in the warranty.
I would say we continue to the next meeting.
Okay.
Well, you don't have it for us.
It's not, it's not, the verbiage isn't.
All right, why don't you put it up to the next meeting?
Okay. Do that.
The FEMA letter's right here, and that's where we are in the agenda.
Thank you. I don't think there's any action for us to take.
It was just a letter saying that it's been approved.
That approved?
Yeah, we had to send it to paperwork.
Okay. All right, we got a status report from municipal and school building. The wiring, so town hall wiring for the front door is complete, display will show all the meetings, et cetera. Windows are in the process of being installed. Elementary school, the backflow preventer was weeping, the building needed to be drained in order to repair it. The school was closed due to vacation. Mr. Materna is looking into a bypass so that the building will not have to be drained if there's an issue in the future. The cost is $5,300. Pope's tavern, the windows are installed, grids on the windows are not what was ordered, they will be replaced shortly. Mr. Materna holding the last payment until they are replaced, working on the concrete pad in the basement for the oil tank. The ADA study, Mr. Materna is working with, Mr. Thorne. And the library, there are leaks under the windows, and this is a big job to repair, and we'll need to go on the capital plan.
Okay.
We received a copy of the site plan for 49 Cover Street, if anyone has any ideas or response, please contact the planning board. So then we've received a letter from the Silver Lake School Committee requesting to use ARPA funds to support the HVAC improvement proposal. We have met several times, the town leaders discussed the potential use of ARPA funds for this purpose. I have attached an estimate of the cost associated with such project. If you have any concerns, please reach out to Superintendent Prue or the Facilities Director, Matt Turkey.
Where is that? Am I missing something?
That's it.
I don't have any, thanks, Steve Altman.
That was just a little memo from that, that's all they sent, just a memo from.
She said she attached the estimate, where is that?
Yeah, the estimate's not here, it's just an email saying that they didn't receive the estimate.
Because I didn't get that, I don't know, must have got it, but I can have a check or email.
Okay, perfect.
All right, we'll add that to the agenda for the next meeting to vote the stormwater next. Okay, revised nursing contract. So per council, a section that was taken out, the nurse was in agreement with the update request is to approve the updated contract, all three of us would need to sign. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Passes.
It's a 388.
Yep, 3822. Thank you. All right, Gordon, I'll write it for you.
Okay, so we have a 5G policy that was requested by Charlie before he left. So we need to add that as a zoning article as well, and send that to the planning board. So it was a document that was sent to us by Brooks and Durensis, so.
Who has that?
I don't, I have it, Ed has it. You don't have a copy of that? Okay.
It's an article?
Yeah, so. All right, I will send that to you right afterwards, Pam, so we can send that, so.
So do, was it that I do, I've never done this before.
So it's a.
It's a child, though, so.
So we, we send the, the.
Article.
Article to the planning board, they hold the public hearing on the article for 5G wireless. Basically, the article tries to have some control over the placement, but you're pretty limited by the FCC. but you're pretty limited by the FCC, uh, regulations of wireless communications. So... Okay. Uh, so then... Then we have, uh...
Zoning articles?
Zoning, okay. Pam, the request to do the field of flags? Oh, that's afterwards, okay. Okay, so... Alright, so the next one, we have zoning, uh, for the special town meeting, it's a petition article to, uh, change for marijuana establishments. So we need to, it, it's been certified, there's a hundred signatures, and that's enough to cause the article to be placed on the special town meeting. So we need to send this as well to the planning board so that they can hold a public hearing.
There's two, but one didn't have enough.
So one doesn't have enough.
Certified, so that one would not go.
So that one would not go.
No, so we submitted the one.
Yep.
Okay.
So is there a motion to send that?
What's your card?
I think she already did, so she already did, I don't know.
She already sent it to the pl, because we've got a vote to send it to the planning board, because it's a zoning article. So is there a motion to send the article to the planning board for hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Alright.
Solar Farm.
What's that?
Solar Farm update.
Solar Farm update. So, did anyone have any thoughts about what Jerry presented? Do we want to do the lease to own option? We want them to go forward with the RFP?
Well, I think there was a lot of unanswered questions there still, and I think maybe our council should look at what he had started.
See, the difference between this recommendation to own the property, we already own the property, it's all the field itself.
Right.
I, I just don't see maintaining it, keeping it up date, whether we want to take that responsibility on.
I think if we're gonna go forward with it, we should lease it first with an option to buy later.
I think that that's what he was proposing.
Or he said we could buy it right out, which I don't know.
I think his preferred method was to do the lease to own, where you would purchase at either the five or the eight-year mark. Do you want us to vote to issue the RFP for the lease to own? And he can go forward with the project?
Yeah, I would motion that.
I'll second it.
Alright, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, so you can work with Mr. Joy on that one?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so, uh, next up is the use of ARPA funds for the interactive display.
Cancel that.
Okay. Use of ARPA funds for network security.
Yes. Um, I gave each of you, uh, two sheets of paper. First sheet pretty much outlines what we would get, or what I proposed we'd get with ARPA, and that would cover, well, we need to do which is the police, fire, library and water departments, and then the rest of the other town departments as well, because currently there's a promotion where if we get a three-year license, we get the hardware for you. That promotion is available.
Does, does, the money that you're talking about account for maintenance of the system, or breakdowns, anything that may come along?
There are no... There are no, are you, what was the question specifically?
Is there money in the variable, because ARPA funds are not gonna last, it's a one-shot deal.
You want the recurring costs.
Yeah, recurring costs.
The, the only recurring cost out of that is the licensing, but because we'd be getting a three-year license, it would, if we were to get it now, it would be good until fiscal year twenty twenty-five. It would be from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five, and it would decrease our budget for fiscal twenty-three. If we get everything, if we go with everything, all departments out of ARPA, and go with the request that I proposed, I'd be able to level fund my budget. If we decide not to use ARPA for it, and only go with, either go with ARPA for what we need, or what, uh, or say no to everything and go to capital, my budget would be going up around seventy-five hundred dollars.
So what was, so we gave this as an article to, to capital, right?
Yes, it was initially an ARPA request, and then out of, you know, just the safety of making sure it was in both places.
No, this amount right here, they had in that budget last night, right? Or did they not? Last night's meeting.
Well, the amount would be different, because on the ARPA request, we'd be doing all departments, so initially it'd be more.
So our capital request is just the police and fire?
Police, fire, water, and, uh...
What was the, do you remember the amount on those?
If you look at the second sheet, it will tell you, um, it tells you what the amount is, would be requested for all.
What's the life expectancy of the equipment?
So right now, we have a replacement schedule that we try to stick to ten years. Last time we did a network refresh for the town buildings was in twenty seventeen slash twenty eighteen, it was, it was over the two. So we're expected to be doing another one within the next four, five years. And if we take advantage of the promotion now, we'll be kind of offsetting that in the next five years.
I think you're better off to just go forward with the capital request for police and fire, and work with the Rock on what they have for grants.
I think so too, I think this is covered with what we were talking about for capital and in the finance committee.
What would the Rock and grants have to do with anything?
Well, Jason was saying earlier that they, they were able to...
They do help with all, you know, if they have help with computer stuff, I don't know if they'll be able to help with that.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, if, if we're gonna be going to capital for firewalls or police and fire, there is no grant...
Okay.
To subsidize, subsidize that, that the Rock would do. It's either we don't do anything with police and fire, and we'll, you know, wait for a grant, which is good, smart idea. But essentially, if we invest the money out of ARPA now, our budget is level funded next year, or at least my budget is level funded next year.
But I think the problem with replacing everything at once is what we're gonna see at the school when it comes to the Chromebooks in three or four years from now, when we replaced all of those, they're all going to need to be refreshed. And I think if you do a network refresh across the board, you're gonna have the same issue where you have a large cost.
I, I would agree, but we already did that in twenty seventeen.
Right, so I'm saying that I think if you try to break it up, and if you did, you're, you're asking police, fire, library and water with the capital. I, I'm not worried about the sales team talking about what they have for discounts right now. I th, I think you need to go forward under the capital. I, I'm really concerned about using ARPA funds for all these things. We've, we're getting in all sorts of requests from all these different departments. And I, I think if we're gonna use the ARPA funds, we need to look forward into can we appropriate those costs on an op, if it's an operational cost? Can we afford to carry that forward?
If we go with just the capital, we're gonna have an automatic minimum seventy-five hundred dollar increase in the budget. I mean, and, and I just making that very clear, if we go capital and we decide to split it up, my budget's going. And that's service, like that's contractual obligation we have to cover this. Coincidentally, we photoflight it. If we fund it with ARPA, because that new license would replace what we would be renewing in July, we wouldn't pay, our budget would go down. So I don't care either way, I just broke down the options, so that you guys can make your decision.
I would like to hold off on this one, so that I can go back and look at our capital planning and our budget and look at what happened with finance last night.
Okay.
I don't want to vote on this one yet until I can see the free cash and everything going on.
Can we make a decision by the third week?
Yeah, we'll do it on our next meeting, what's our next meeting?
After the third week, this, this is probably not gonna be even enough.
Twenty seconds, next meeting.
I will see if that is... I can tell you right now that I cannot promise I will be able to guarantee the price of that.
Worst case, we go with capital, but I don't, I wanna look into all that before.
Perfectly fine, I just wanna set the expectations low.
Okay. So we've got a five o'clock appointment?
Welcome back.
Hello.
Where do we stand right now?
Do you have to read that, um, that we opened it, no?
We, we already read it, we're just opening the public hearing again, it's five oh seven. Okay.
Yes, and, um, my case is in, right now, I give the person who, that, uh, because they handled my case for the banker, they are getting the, uh, personal...
Thank you.
Emergency, and then on twenty eighth, they passed my case to the new person. The new person needed a time to review my documents, so then, I mean...
So...
I cannot control it all.
So we, we had a question over whether or not we can, I mean, we can continue it again. And Pam will reach out to the ABCC to see how long the continuance can stay open.
Right, right, exactly.
We can, we can put it on the next meeting, and if there's no update, we can continue it again. If we can't continue it, we'll reach out and let you know. Is that, alright?
Okay, yeah, so it's an only day.
Okay.
They, uh, personal emergency and passing my case.
Okay, so we'll, is there a motion to continue the public hearing until March twenty-second at five PM here in the board of selectmen's room? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed, did you get an update on the next, the baseball field?
Yeah, I had a discussion with, uh, the, is it the chairman of the...
Director, he was the rec director.
Oh. Youth director. And, uh, we, um, he contacted a couple of towns, um, one, uh, one town had direct, um, involvement with the, uh, uh, with the receipts of, uh, the advertising signs. Uh, another community, the town had no, um, uh, involvement at all. It was strictly, uh, the youth baseball contract, um, would enter into advertisement agreements, and, uh, it was solely up to them to do whatever they wanted with the proceeds, whereas another town, um, had direct involvement and had direct involvement over the dispersment of any proceeds from, from the signs.
What was?
And I think the recommendation of, uh, my new best friend, um, was that the town be involved in the, in the proceeds and the dispersment of the funds. Do they have anything in this, or...
Pardon?
Yeah, anything concerning the type of advertisement? Yeah, there was, uh, there was control over what was, uh, you know, what was put up. So there were guidelines that they would set up.
So if the money comes in without an appropriation at town meeting, they can't spend it, so could they do a revolving fund?
It could.
So we'd have to ask them how much money?
Well, I think there's some research to do there, we're gonna have to see how much, like, how many signs they can put up, how much they're gonna sell per sign. I think that they haven't even gone to that point because they haven't got the okay from the town to start the process. So I think we should either agree or disagree to the advertising and then maybe work with Youth and Rec or who you were talking with.
Do you wanna, do you wanna invite Youth and Rec to come in for our next meeting?
Yeah, he would have been here if, if he had, you know, found out today about what time.
Okay, so let's move back to the next, and make an appointment time for it. Please. Okay.
Okay. So we have a...
Flags.
Flags, requests from the VFW to establish a field of flags on the town green. They would like to install the flags on May fourteenth to June fourth, three weeks. The field consists of five hundred flags, and is an approximate fifteen by thirty-foot rectangular pattern. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Can we, uh, let Mr. Walsh know and thank him for doing that? Okay. Uh, so we have an update and discussion on the plan for the councils on aging.
It's gonna be a fun one. We're at the Council of Aging.
Do you have the plans back there?
Yes, she brought them.
Okay.
So the chief and Darlie and I looked at a couple of other options in the town yesterday to where we could potentially relocate the COA if this project were to not go forward, um, at town meeting. I think one of the two options are potential, but there's a lot of, um, it's a lot of legal work there. I don't think the second option was even close to an option. So that brings us to this, um, so this is first option.
Okay.
If it passes through town meeting.
So would you be in favor of the fifteen thousand dollars to move forward with a set of plans to present hopefully to town meeting if we approve it today?
Yes, but I also agree we should, um, we had talked about proposing the whole article to town meeting.
So this is the, the fifteen thousand is for the design development phase, and then the next piece is a hundred thousand, that's for the detailed, detailed drawings.
Yes.
I think what Ashley's saying is, instead of going to town meeting and asking for the detailed drawings, maybe we ask for enough to cover the entire cost of the project instead of going back.
Oh, I, my, my plan was to ask the board to approve the fifteen thousand dollars today.
Right.
Out of the ARPA funds, because council on aging is affecting, um...
They're affecting immunity with COVID.
Yes.
Yes, I agree, I'm not disagreeing to that, we were just having to talk about the article. So yes, I would motion today to do the fifteen thousand dollars out of ARPA to finish the plans for the COA.
Okay, so then we would be looking to put on the...
Second.
Do you like a copy of this? It's actually the architects, we probably have.
Yeah, we're...
All those in, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're not gonna present a town piecemeal, we're gonna present one plan?
That's what I said.
So this, so we use the right line, this fifteen thousand is for the design development stage?
Yes.
Okay, so that, so the... Holly, you didn't get that email, right? That was Sandy that got the email about the...
Bond.
Bond?
I did get it.
I think I have.
You did get it?
It's in for... The language?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, here we go, I found it, I was, I wasn't sure what was going on. So... We have... We have the ability to take the amount of money that was overborrowed for the elementary school. we have the ability to take the amount of money that was overborrowed for the elementary school and repur, re.
Purse.
Yeah. For the council and aging.
Right.
And it would be approximately enough money very close to fund the whole project of which.
A million too?
What, do you have, do you have that sheet, Darlene?
I thought the estimate was a million two, but we have 1.5 in the bond.
Right, so.
You know, you said the problem right now is the material cost.
So so we'd be going to town meeting, looking to repurpose that money. We have an estimate right now of 1.38 million to 1.46 million. That did not include the 155,000.
Right, so instead of going to town meeting to, I, like Troy just said, and like I was saying before, I don't want to piecemeal it together. I just want to tell the whole town what it is, what the project is, why we have the money, and put it all out there to everybody. I don't want to come back to another meeting and have the town upset or not be able to follow that we're trying to get more money, get more money for a project. I'd rather just present the whole entire project. This is why, this is how, and this is what we want to do, and go with it. So we don't have to bring it back again.
I, I think we will have to come up with the 140,000.
Okay, so then you should work with Sandy on writing the letter to the state to be able to use a percentage of that, or a set fund of that ARPA money for the affected communities because she needs something written up.
So you want to take an additional 140? So.
There is money in ARPA that we can't use for anything else except for situations like that, but you have to get it approved by the state first. So you should write a letter up from the chair of the Board of Selectmen saying this is why we want to use it for that. So that Sandy can submit it and we can try to go that route with that.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're going to, at the next meeting, have an article that we're going to support for the whole project and a ballot question. Because we need to have a ballot question to repurpose the money.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. You're okay with that?
I think it's the best course at this time, especially making sure the state's on board with it.
Okay, I will work on that one. Okay.
BOH and Town Clerk vital fees, that's where we are.
Okay.
When does this year increase the fee?
We haven't yet, that's what we're looking at. So right now, it seems like majority of surrounding towns of us are $10 or 15 minus one, and we are at five.
Sue's email. I'm just going to call Sue now.
Okay.
No, she, I haven't gotten a response yet, but I can just email.
Okay.
Hi, we're in the meeting right now. What was the amount that you were recommending to change the vitals to?
A what?
Okay. So are you recommending 10? Okay. And that, and that's just a vote of the Board of Selectmen and not a town meeting vote? Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
That's what we're on right now. He's talking.
Okay, Sue is recommending that we change the cost of the vitals to $10. Currently it is five.
I move that we do that.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye. Uh, did we get anything on the Board of Health? Or only Town Clerk? It says BOH.
Yeah, no, he didn't, um, he didn't get it.
He's supposed to be on Zoom.
Uh, can we, can we call him and see if he's, I don't want to skip him out where the Zoom's not working. Right, just call him on your phone first to make sure.
You, you guys, is he able to hear it fine?
Yeah.
Mr. Joy.
That sounds horrible.
We voted earlier to have the RFP set up for at least a own and asked that you would work with Mr. Thorne.
Oh, super.
There we go.
Hey, how are you?
Very persuasive.
The board wanted to talk to you about your agenda. If that's okay. How the fees?
If you looked into his fees from the Department of Meeting.
The increase in?
Any of his Board of Health fees?
Any Board of Health fees. They've forgotten that for you.
Okay, we'll move it to next meeting, 20 seconds.
Okay.
Okay.
Possible new schedule for the blood drive.
Okay, so.
This came into play because the doors to town hall are locked now on Friday and are by appointment only. And we could have situations where we don't have employees in the building, but we're hosting a blood drive. So.
So I, I talked to the Town Clerk earlier, and when somebody has booked the great hall on the weekend, they can use the great hall on the weekend, the door needs to be unlocked for them.
So you think it's okay to do it?
So it would be the same with the blood drive.
Okay.
And now that all the doors, locks are, been changed and updated, I think it's, I think it's fine to have the door unlocked for their blood drive. Have them do just the hours they want the doors unlocked for.
Okay, so we just need to make sure that Caesar's told when the doors need to be unlocked so that he can make sure they're unlocked from that time period and that they're locked again.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Town Clerk certified, oh, I don't want to read this one. You read this one.
Do you want me to read this one, Troy, or do you want to? So the Town Clerk has certified the resignation of Selectman Garen effective March 28th, 2022.
I would like to take the opportunity to thank all those people who've supported me over the years and that I hopefully haven't disappointed anybody in my taking time for family. And hopefully things will continue as, as always. The people that are sitting next to me are, are apparently healthy for the town's benefit. I would like to thank you once again. It is a very difficult decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
So is there anything else special about that day?
It's my birthday.
And it's only the 30th.
Did you?
Suicide.
So once, um.
So we have to have a party.
Once you give us the time that you're going to be available on the 28th, we are planning to do something for you for both acknowledging.
Well, it's against the law to target another person.
All right, we'll take that off, so scratch that. Yeah, so when you let us know when you're available that day, we'll have a dual party for you.
Try to plan something for you. I just want to make sure that the time works for you. And then I can communicate with all the different people that you've affected over the years, uh, because you've done a great deal for this community.
We might have to like.
You were my soccer coach before you were Selectman, so.
We might have to do this in a bigger, like, the great hall.
Oh, it's got, yeah, it's going to be in the great hall. Yeah, so you've done a lot for this community. You've given up a lot of your time for the rest of us.
Do bad, I mean, it's not, not a big deal.
Oh, it is a big deal.
You are a big deal to us.
It's a big deal.
No time to be humble yet. Put it aside.
You can be humble when you're bored and you miss us. Might take a little while to miss us, but you will.
Thank you, Troy.
Oh, thank you.
So then we have to vote to update the list of the offices that will be elected at the annual ta, annual election. So we have to add in a one-year seat to the Board of Selectmen with a term of an effective date of next year. So is there a motion?
Some moved. Unless you want to change your mind. Okay, I was checking before we, before we got that far, so I wanted to make sure you didn't want to change your mind.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then we have ambulance abatements February 22 for the amount of $84,403.10.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
No, 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 end it because you guys got an email. But that's storm water. I guess we have to accept it, the changes. Is someone that sends up into Caesar and we got, it's going to be, it's going to be an article. I couldn't find it in my, at my, on my desk.
Did Bob send it, or was that Conservation Commission?
Do we have it?
It's a new email.
Oh, 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 hold on. Oh, it's like a new email. It just got sent.
Yes, because we have to apologize.
Okay, so proposed storm wa, storm water management bylaw updates. Halifax EPA issued MS4 permit requires a storm water management bylaw. The bylaw was passed in the fall of 2019, but improvements are needed. Bylaw is administered by the Conservation Commission, requires permits for certain types of land disturbance. Proposed changes are supported by the Conservation and Health Agent. The main changes are the app, I can, app, yeah, app, yeah.
Yeah.
A section, a section of storm water permit now required for biosolid application in certain land disturbance in the Montponsit Water Chamber. Remove sections that were redundant with storm water management regulation. Many minor revisions for clarity and consistency with regulations added separability clause, unifying definitions, adjusted formatting.
I think that's what you're reading, Thorne.
Yep. Uh, the board can vote to include the article in the annual town meeting. Okay. Is there a motion to add to the annual town meeting an article with regards to the storm water management?
So that's been something that we've been working very hard on to get it done in 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
So we'll have the article, so at the next meeting, we'll go over all the articles?
Yes.
And.
I believe Caesar, where did you go? He was there too. I think the Finance Committee is going to start going through their articles next week.
Okay, so we should go through that list of articles at the next meeting and see if there's any others that, at that meeting is the last day to add articles. That, that was the closed date for the warrant we had sent.
Right.
So if you're going to submit the five member or the Selectman article.
That has to be voted next.
That needs to be voted on the next.
Next meeting.
Yep.
And we didn't really talk about it, decided it was in the, um, T, the report, but maybe we should have that on the agenda for the next one.
Okay. We've got multiple executive sessions.
I move to go into executive session. I don't think we only need to go into one, but I move to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations for Sergeant's Fire, Freight, or Highway mixed unit. As discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. To discuss the 12 taxable inhabitants of Town of Halifax versus Town of Halifax. As discussing strategy with respect to litigation in open meeting may have detrimental effect on litigating position of the town. Approval executive session meeting minutes 11:23:21. And I don't think we can do anything with the other one yet, so I would move that we adjourn from executive session.
Okay, is there?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Troy?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Myself? Yes.